I'd like to call this March 14th regular council meeting order. Would everybody please stand for a moment of silence? And let's remember all of those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gerard.
President.
Mr. Ricchio.
Present.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Pezza.
Mrs. Collins.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Controci.
Present.
Mr. D Giuseppe.
Here.
Just for the record, Mr. Pezza's wife had a baby and that's why he's not here this evening. And Mrs. Collins wanted everybody to know she's in North Carolina for a tournament with her daughter, softball. Okay. Before we get started this evening, we have three presentations to do, and Mrs. Rodriguez will do the honors this evening. First, her and Mayor Sabatini would like to bring up Chief Porter and his family to be honored for his service of 39 years in the borough.
Any smiling from here to here?
You're smiling. Joe's in the hot seat now.
Joe.
How you doing?
Well, you know, it's an honor, first of all, to have been here for the last 12 years and worked, you know, with Mr. Porter. And I've never seen him smile so much in my life. You could tell retirement has definitely done well for him and his beautiful family. Here's a man who served for over 37, 38, 39 years and never once complained to us. I've never heard him complain about what he has to do for the borough. He's attended many, many different functions, including all our activities, you know, at the river. He's gone to many different affairs to represent the borough. And I think it's just an honor to be able to sit here and say goodbye to him, but at the same time, good luck. And we'd like to give you this plaque and where a proclamation of Bristol Borough, County of Bucks County recognizes Mr. Arnie Porter on his retirement.
Thank you very much.[195.12][195.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Betty, for that. That was absolutely beautiful. I've known Mr. Porter, Chief Porter, excuse me. He'll always be Chief Porter in Bristol Borough, but I've known him for a very long time, way, well before I was up here as a councilman and as a mayor. I had utmost respect for him and he's been nothing but a respectful person back. I just want to wish you all the best in your retirement. Keep that glow that's on your face and just keep hitting that ball straight down into the grain. At this time, Sergeant Moore would like to come up and say a few words.
Congratulations, Chief. Enjoy your retirement.[248.23][248.23](APPLAUSE). I'm here myself, the council, the mayor, the citizens of the town, and all the officers that are sitting in the back there. I came on, it was a long time ago, a long time ago, I guess you can remember. You were my sergeant. And from then on, the new council took over in 2000, I forget the exact year, but it's been about 14 years now, and we built a police department here since you took over in 2000 as the chief of police, 16 years ago after almost 40 years in the police field. And is it about 39 here in Bristol Borough?
37.
That's a heck of an achievement, 37 years in one place as a police officer. But we turned the police department around under your leadership. We built it. We have a state-of-the-art facility downstairs, probably one of the nicest ones here in Bucks County. And there's some serious, large shoes that this council needs to fill to take your place. And I wanted to thank you, and I know all the guys sitting back there, everybody's proud of you and what you did, and thank you for all the leadership and the direction that you put us in head-on from here. Thanks again, Chief.
Thank you.
And thank his family. I think we should all thank his family for letting us have him for the past 37 years, day in and day out. Thank you very much.[332.63][332.63](APPLAUSE). The officers and the ladies would like to come up?
I would.
More than welcome.
Come on, Richard, stretch out for one.
Come on, Marie. Chief Porter, this is your police force here. They're all here to wish you the best of luck, and they're all here to make sure that glow stays on your face.
Thank you.
And we wish you all the best again. And I'm sure these guys, if they could say anything, if you guys want to say anything? Just.[392.03][392.03](LAUGHTER). Got Brady? And I want to turn it over to Chief Porter and let him say something, but this is a dedication to you, and you can see that your men have really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you. I never believed this day would come. It's very difficult walking away from a job, a career, that you truly loved. But I have to tell you, the first three weeks have been fantastic.[431.03][431.03](LAUGHTER). And my family and I hope it continues for such a long time. It has been an honor to be your chief of police for nearly 15 years and to be a Bristol Borough police officer for nearly 37 years. Right from the beginning, this town seemed to embrace me, as I did it. I don't know what it was, it was the DNA makeup Bristolians, or it was the 1970s, or maybe just my style of policing, but I always felt so comfortable working in Bristol Borough. And probably that's why these years seem to have flown by. But I am very grateful to have been part of what I call the rebirth of Bristol Borough from the late 70s to today. And I just hope that my small contribution has played some role in that rebirth. I've had a lot of support and a lot of understanding from my family. They know that I appreciate it, but I want to publicly let them know that having them along this journey has meant a lot to me, and that's why I love them so much, all of When I announced my retirement four months ago, I had a plan to go around and individually thank all the people that were nice to me or kind to me or helped me in some way, but after about a week or so of doing that, I knew it couldn't be accomplished in that short of a period of time. It would take me over a year, if not more. So I'd like to thank anyone and everyone who's been good to me, kind, given me good advice, been my back, watched my back. It's been very, very good, very good for me. And for all my officers here, my secretarial staff, past and present, thank you so much. They made the job fun, at times challenging, oftentimes trying, but they made me laugh, and I needed that, believe me, throughout the years, I needed that. To all the Bristol residents, the businesses, business owners, the employees of those businesses, the people in the public and private school districts, thank you. Thank you for working with our police department so closely and having such a great partnership. To our fire department, medical staff, emergency medical services, fire police, crossing guards, my parking enforcement officer, it's been a pleasure working with all of you. To Mayor Sabatini and past mayors, to current elected officials and past officials, thank you. Thank you for working with me most of the time. Thank you for being there for me all of the time. There'll always be a special place in my heart for Bristol Borough. I'm not going anywhere. I plan to be active in a lot of the committees that I'm on right now. I won't be a stranger to Bristol Borough, however, I will no longer be a fixture here in Bristol Borough, and that's what I will really miss. But thank you, thank you for the plaque, thank you for my guys coming out and supporting me. Thank you all. It's been a pleasure, and God bless you all.
Okay, we have Rich Hughes and I don't know who else from the fire police. Would you please come up? Mrs. Rodriguez has a check for you.
I'd just like to say that we're giving the fire traffic police $1,000 to help them with whatever they need, and it's nearly not enough. These people are volunteers. They go out, they're called in the middle of the night if there's a fire, we're having an issue, the cops need help, they're there. We don't have enough volunteers, I don't, you know, people aren't into it like they used to be, but it would be great to see a bunch of people just want to help the fire police out because they are really important. They're important in what they do to keep this town safe when something's going on, to block the area so nothing worse happens. And it's just an honor to give this to you, and I hope it helps in any way.
Thank you.
Also have Scott Bonner and coming up. Who's coming up, Scott or Jeff?
Come on up.
Come on up.
Scott.
Oh, I know. Come on. Again, we are giving a donation towards the ambulance. We do it every year, and it's basically to help them keep running. But Mr. Bonner and I spoke not too long ago, and people were a little, you know, concerned. People are always complaining, they never get anything in the office. It's never enough when they're too slow and things don't happen fast enough. But there's always a reason, and I thought maybe tonight you can touch on, you know, some of the activity that we've been dealing with, with the overdoses and that.
Sure, sure. What we've noticed over the past probably 24 months throughout the greater Bristol area is a tremendous increase in demand for service. And with that demand, there's a limitation, and that's just with the extent of services that we can provide. Over that period of time, we've seen a tremendous increase specifically in the area of drug overdoses and those associated with opioids and other narcotics. Unfortunately, with that increased demand, there's that utilization as well. We just don't have enough resources to be able to meet everybody's demand. So at times, we are providing mutual aid by other EMS services, and that can add in somewhat of a delay in response, but it's just physically and fiscally impossible for us to meet all the demand.
Yes, and on behalf of the borough, we'd like to help you out with a donation for $5,000, and we do appreciate everything you do to help our citizens of this town.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate the support of Bristol Borough and Bristol Police. Thank you.
Thank you.[975.81][975.81](APPLAUSE). Thank you, Scott.
We're done with presentations. I'm going to open up public participation. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Go to podium and state your name and address for the record.
Who do you think? This is Harry Crowe, 231 Jackson Street. I never missed the opportunity to say a few nice words. I usually come here and say a lot of nice things. Something happened today, actually Scott Bonner called me and almost gave me a heart attack. There was a house fire on the 300 block of Jackson Street. Ironically, I live on the 200 block of Jackson Street, and at first we got the addresses confused, I thought it was my house. I was there shortly thereafter the fire started, and I'm here tonight, and I know that you know, but I just want to reinforce and remind you of the wonderful job that our firefighters do. I mean, you guys know that I've been a firefighter for years. I'm over the hill and I watch the younger guys do it now. But our guys today, they saved the catastrophe. There were seven houses in a row, the fire started on the third house in, and they contained the fire to that one unit. And I think that, you know, our guys are underappreciated, so I just want to let the borough residents know and everybody here, and let you guys know what a terrific job that they do all the time, and a terrific job that they did today. Thank you, guys. One other thing. I see number 10 on the agenda about removing, raising the bar information from the website. I encourage you not to do that. I think the raising the bar has been doing so much in our community, I think it would be a shame to take that away. I'm just so excited as a borough resident of all the positive things that this raising the bar committee has done. And I would ask you tonight, when it comes time to vote for that, not to take it off the website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak? I don't know if these kids, they're just here. Okay, that ends public participation. Mayor's communication.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let's go through a couple of things we just went through. We had retirement of a longtime police officer, wishing the best, as we, I'm glad that the police force came out. I commend Sergeant Moore for doing a great job of getting the name up here, the secretaries that work for him, it's great to see that. For the fire police, I wish you the best of luck with your donation that was given from this council to you. Always out there trying to push for you guys for volunteers. For the rescue squad, I'd like to wish you all the best of luck. It is a service that you give to this town that cannot be lost. I hope that in the future, litigation will get through in Harrisburg area, the monies will go directly to you instead of other people that you service. I believe that there's issues that you guys have to deal with, and you're on a tight, fixed income. I wish we could give you a check for $50,000. I really appreciate. I would, I wish, but can't do it right now, but I got it, I would open it up for you. But I just hope, I wish you guys the best of luck because it's a service these Bristolians need. And to the council president, I don't know how we usually do this, but we're short on crossing guards, okay? The police will be able to take care of the crossing guards over here at Mulberry and Pond for this week, but I was wondering if we could put in for a crossing guard for that section and possibly go out for three substitutes. So if that could be done, that'd be greatly appreciated. Bristol Borough was...
Go ahead.
Okay. Bristol Borough was represented by Officer Davis today and Senator Nixon for the fallen state trooper that happened in New Jersey, very sad thing. We have a new officer that's already on the streets, already getting to know the area. He will be introduced to everybody at the April meeting, and I'm glad to tell you all that the bikes are ready. We're ready to hit the streets with the rubber. We've got all brand-new, all new wheels on the bikes, and they will be out. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Just back up a minute. Do you want to add a crossing guard?
Yes.
So we're going to add another location.
No, we have a shortage here.
No, I don't care, I'm just asking you.
Yes. What I would like to do, Mr. Council President, is to have this area here, Pond and Mulberry Street, covered so the police aren't stuck there during the day for the crossguards. We could take care of it for this week, but I'm looking for the following, that we could have someone...
Don't we have somebody at Pond and Mulberry? Joe?
I want to refer this to Sergeant Moore, Mr. President.
I'm confused.
There's just a little confusion, that's all. The crossing guard here at Pond and Mulberry is going to be out sick for the rest of the week.
Okay.
We don't need another full-time crossing guard, but we do need, like the mayor said, I met with Roxanne, and I've had several conversations with her, we do need about three subs. We've been handling St. Mark's a lot the past few weeks, and now we'll be handling out here this week, which is fine.
But we're not adding any more.
We're not adding a full-time salary.
No, we're not adding another location.
No.
That's all I wanted to know.
Excuse me for giving you the wrong impression there. What I, we need, basically, Mr. President, we need...
Some more subs.
We need some subs so we can keep the police force in the police cars or on foot or on bike, so...
Jim, if we have people on file, just bring them in.
If I could just add something to that real quick, I want to, it's just so everybody knows, when, the police department is covering, we had an issue today, and this is a really important corner here at Pond and Mulberry. The police officer was called away on something. It wasn't that he did not show up, he was called away and then he got back in time to get the kids across the street, because that is a very important...
The only reason I'm bringing it up is, and I hate to get into the school board because everybody thinks I pick on them, but the president of the school board did say that the crossing guard situation was out of hand, and, you know, the borough basically could bankrupt the school district by hiring as many crossing guards and putting them wherever we want. I mean, my, you know, I don't go to school, but I wish she would come here and discuss it with us publicly. But I just, that's why I was asking the mayor, am I confused on, because I don't want to say the council added another location, which we can, but, you know, we get blamed for too much stuff, so I don't think she understands what's going on. And again, if she wants to come here and discuss it, I'm here twice a month. So that's, Pat, you're done?
Yes.
That ends the mayor's communication, so we'll go to number...
Can I say something?
Sure, I'm sorry about that.
I just want to take a minute to, a couple of weeks ago, we did have a shooting, which ended up in a homicide, and it was on my street, and everybody knows, you know, his name was Bink. That's what everybody calls him, Bobby Coulter's son. I just want to tell you that I had the time to meet with the family. It was a sad situation, and on behalf of the Coulter family, they want to thank Joe for being there for them and helping them out through this hard and difficult time. For the entire Bristol Borough Police Department, who took the time to stop there periodically to check up on them, they actually were there when they had a vigil, which, you know, was very sad at the time, which, you know, nobody should have to bury their child, especially in that situation. But they have asked me to thank you, Joe, and to thank the entire Bristol Borough Council and the police department, and anybody who took the time to stop and see them, and, you know, it's hard to, it's just hard, it's hard, but thank you on their, you know, behalf.
Okay, before we get into our agenda, I just want to remind everybody that this Thursday is St. Patty's Day, and on St. Patrick's Day, I guess everybody is Irish, including, so I would like to wish everyone a happy holiday on St. Patty's Day, and, you know, enjoy yourself, but just be safe. Okay, we're going to go to number three on the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the council minutes from 2116, 2816, 3716. Accept treasurer's report for December 2015, January 2016. Accept the police and DJ report for February 2016. Accept the fire chief's report for February 2016. Accept the inspections department report for February 2016. Accept the Public Works Department report for February 2016. Accept the HARB report and decisions for 229.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gerard. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Oppose? Number four.
On the exception of the treasurer's report, I will abstain.
Number four.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the preliminary final waiver of land development for Aqua PA. TMP number 04004-001-003 expires 4/17/16.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Ricchio. Questions or comments? Tony, could you read that motion? I'm sorry, Betty, glad the solicitor gave me some motions.
Motion to approve the waiver of land development plan application for Aqua Pennsylvania Incorporated for tax parcel numbers 04021-081, 0421-80-1, and parcel 04-21-79, according to the plan prepared by CET Engineering Services, GHD, project number 8910440, dated January 18, 2013, last amended February 17, 2016, consisting of sheets 1 through 39, subject to the conditions set forth in the March 14, 2016, letter to the applicant, which the applicant's engineer has reviewed and approved.
The senator made the motion. Betty, second.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Devine.
Yeah, is this something different? Because I don't see that on my agenda. Which one did you read? That was number four?
Yes. What's on the agenda is the general motion, the solicitor has prepared a detailed motion that expands on the approval and mentions the exact dates of the plans in question so that if council accepts the motion that's been read, that will be conveyed to the applicant in writing and documented. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye, I abstain.
Okay. Do you have to state why or look? All right, number five.
Okay. Motion to approve waiver of land development plan application for Bank of America for tax parcel number 4-004-001-003, according to the plan prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design dated August 27, 2015, and last revised March 1, 2016, consisting of sheets C1 through C8, subject to the following conditions. of sheets C1 through C8, subject to the following conditions, as set forth in the document.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Riquio. Questions or comments? The only comment I'd like to make is that he expanded on the same motion that Tony did with Aqua, with Aqua. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number six.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a give more proposal dated 2/1516 in the amount of $8,000 to meet federal national pollution discharge elimination system regulation, MS4 general agreement.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Catroci. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting written procedures to comply with Act 44.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Catroci. Any questions or comments? Mr. Devine.
Yes, Act 44, what does that, what's that in reference to?
These pension funds, pension funds.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize spending of not to exceed $2,500 to conduct a parking plan study of the borough.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number nine.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the high bid for the 2010 Ford Crown Victoria from Mark Woodhouse in the amount of $5,100 per municipal online government auction.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Catroci. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number 10.
I'd like to make a motion. No, I don't. I'd like to table that motion.
Well, you can vote yes or no on the motion, so you want to make a motion?
Well, then I don't want to make the motion. I don't want to make the motion.
Somebody got to make a motion, either table it, or its motion dies for... Nobody wants to make a motion?
Well, I think that this motion, to me, is, it's the wrong motion. This isn't, this isn't the motion that, you know, I brought up at the latest meeting, so...
Well, it says motion to remove raising the bar information from the borough webpage and television channel, so either we're going to vote yes to remove it, or no to leave it on.
Well, the problem with the motion is that it's a general, whoever wrote it made it a general motion that didn't convey...
Why don't you make a new motion?
Okay, well, the motion, so everybody understands, again, this is something, Mr. Crowe, you know, he spoke about it publicly also, is that, the motion that I brought up and the concerns that I had...
Tony, just not to interrupt you, you want to amend the motion, right? So you're going to make a new motion?
Okay.
So just make the motion.
I will, because I'm going to explain what, why I'm doing it, so everyone in the borough understands the reason. So as I was saying, Mr. Crowe, is that, what happened with that motion is that, I guess, people didn't understand, there shouldn't be a motion to remove the raising of the bar information from the borough webpage and television channel, because that's something that was never voted on. So you can't vote on something, to me, you can't vote on something that was never voted on in the first place. So the motion should be to have the raising the bar icon that's on our website, so that way, people, when they hit it, they can go to raising the bar. That was the first part. So, so everybody understands, I am in agreement with raising the bar, and I think that they do a great job, you know, in the borough and the functions that they do. What I'm saying is it never came to the board, it just wound up on the website. So I am full agreement that it should be on the website. The second concern had nothing to do with the icon that's on the webpage. The second one deals with actual being a board and commission. So when you're a board and commission, those appointments got, they have to come in front of this council, so that we could, you know, we could see resumes, they could tell us about them, and we go through the proper procedures, and then we vote on it. What happened was, that whole, that whole part of it was skipped. I never, I never got any information that those were part of the committee, so I went on to the boards and commissions part of our website, and I saw raising the bar. See, to me, I always thought raising the bar was outside of the political arena, not part of our council. I have no problem with it, I just wanted to make it clear what it is. If it's, if it's council issue and it's, you know, or part of our local government, it is what it is, I just want to vote for it. So with this motion, what I would like to do, is the motion isn't to remove any of the information, the motion is to properly identify and add it to our website, to the icon of raising the bar. Now, the second part of it is the board and commission, that's a whole separate issue. The boards and commissions, I think that that needs to be taken down until this council votes on the appointees of that board. So if that could be two separate motions, that's what I would, you know, that's how I would read it, not to remove it.
It's not a council board, Mr. Devine. It's not a council board. We have nothing to do with this. I mean, we're just...
Okay, ready, here's the frustrating part, right? Is we never have anything to do with it, then why is it on the Bristol Borough Council website?
Because he asked the manager, the raising the bar asked, if they could put their boards and commissions on our website in their icon.
Okay, so that is a council decision that we agree, I mean...
The manager...
Okay, wait a second, if, if whoever...
Hey, I'm not going to...
No, now, listen, this is the thing you love to do. You always want to say it's somebody else. This is something that needs to be approved, and listen, I understand that it went through the manager, but it's not the manager's decision to say, yes, it goes on there, it's this council's vote, not the manager's.
Okay, since I wasn't here last week, and I unfortunately wasn't in agreement, I'm going to make a motion to table number 10.
There's a motion for it to table. We'll call vote. And we'll discuss it.
So that we can discuss and then do it?
Absolutely. Get it clear.
The motion to table is Mr. Gerard.
Yes, and the table.
Mr. Riquio.
Yes.
Mr. Devine.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Catroci.
Yes.
Mr. DJ Zetti. Yes. All right. Before we adjourn, the mayor asked for an executive session, and we also have to finish an executive session about personnel, so...
Okay.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can I get one question? Can I add one thing? I just got a question for Mr. Catroci. I understand why you abstained on number three, because I know it has something to do with CBM. Why would you abstain on number four? What?
Because last week was the first I saw of it, and the general contractor is MF Ronca, and I've done business with Mike Ronca from back in the 80s, before he did any work at the borough water plant, but then, subsequent to that, he's worked at the water plant, he's worked at Roman Hogs, he's worked at a couple different sewer plants in the area.
Okay.
And I, I don't even know if my kids will, you know, I don't know if they're coming to do business with us, but just in case...
No problem.
I wanted to abstain from that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Riquio. Lou, you have anything? I'm sorry.
No, no.
Second by Mr. Riquio. All in favor?
Aye.